Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, March 29, 2023. All council meetings will continue to be live streamed on the city's website. Our first order of business is roll call. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mrs. Cal Smith.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick. Mr. Wilson. Mr. LaValle Chair.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action or deliberation which are or may be before city council and profanity will not be permitted. After you are called, please restate your name and provide your neighborhood for the record. You will be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bell Soover, Homewood, Hanoi, Vietnam, Global Intelligence Society candidate for president 2024, CGSIi.rlm.globalintelligence@gmail.com. A concern of this council clearly from yesterday's proclamations has to do with the so-called Vietnam War, but no one recognized the fact that increasingly through 10 years of difficulty, the people of the United States of America resisted accepting that as a legitimate war. Fifty-five thousand plus of our people died. Over 500,000 Vietnamese died. I have a great deal of difficulty with the way that this was handled yesterday. A concern of this council is familiarity with council districts. And look, I really encourage you councillors to get on a bus alone. Take a 77 Frankstone and get off at the corner of Frankstone and Homewood. And just be there for a while. Understand what it means to travel by bus and also what people are doing, you know, without a lot of hoo-ha in Homewood. And I would suggest too, just imagine that the offices that are at the bakery in East Liberty would be moved somehow by levitation or by other kinds of means to the upper-left corner of Frankstone and Homewood, paying attention to the people and their businesses that are already there, not just, you know, boot them out. But part of the reason I say that is that there are five offices in the bakery. This is a leftover from the Bisco. Now, it's clearly not a bakery in that sense. One is the UPMC Enterprises office. Another is the University of Pittsburgh Department of Rehabilitation Science and Technology. Third is the United States Department of Veterans Affairs, Human Engineering Research Laboratories for CMU Software Engineering Institute and Google. But just imagine, you know, the uplift, the upgrade for people in Homewood if, you know, my dad works for, my mom works for Google. It makes a big difference, you know, in the way that people think about what they do if the value of the people is higher than lower. It sends a signal that I think is really constructive. And I also want to note that Victoria Gray had had sickle cell anemia. No, she doesn't. And this is a constructive use of CRISPR.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Here. My honorable husband was a true City of Pittsburgh public servant, emphasis on servants, from the 1970s until 2021. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. This is for you, Michael. According to the Pennsylvania Constitution, the purpose of government is for the peace, safety, and happiness of the people they serve. The Bon Air Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community. Without that, there is no valid governance. We, the people of Bon Air, welcome a green space to replace this detrimental building. After having three youths taken out of the building in handcuffs and four others fled, it shows the escalation of the problem there. Michael J. Mullen reflection by Battalion Chief Douglas Praskovich. Retired Deputy Chief Mike Mullen touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loves sharing his knowledge of firefighting in all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Mike knew most of the firefighters on the entire Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire by their first name and was always approachable regardless of rank. If you had a question, he would stop what he was doing to answer it. He worked tirelessly but also energetically his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters for years to come. Michael J. Mullen lived a full life as his obituary so accurately described. Mike was passionate, tireless, dedicated, highly conscientious, and caring. Well done, Michael. Well done. Rest in peace, my friend. Open deals in Bon Air. Councilman Kraus got a deal to gain McKinney Park from us. Now we want a green space in place of the detrimental school building. Acquire Bon Air School for $1.00. Tear it down to use Pittsburgh Trees and Parks tax money to make a green space. The opportunity is here and now to create a green space by condemning and tearing down the detrimental building that has caused a threat to the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community. Join our supporters, Mayor Gani, Councilman Coghill, State Representative Benham, for the creation of a green space. The Memorial Green Space is the solution for our community. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District at Katy River. It's tires up on the top of Effort. You know something, citizens? I found something that I think I should say to the citizens and especially you council. This sign says, "I have to teach my face to use my inside voice." Do you understand what I'm saying? Sometimes I know I'm looking real ugly. Well, I'm trying to teach my face to use my inside voice when I'm trying to make a point. Also, I wanted to say that I was running out the door and I picked up the Pittsburgh paper. This paper, and it says that a 1935 murder haunts the present day. This is 1935, and they're still talking about that. It's a whole paper. It's a whole article, but one part I was looking at said, "I guess the lesson is that you learn is regardless of position, regardless of influence, everybody should be treated equally in the eyes of the law." Now, I haven't read that article, but this is what I'd be trying to tell you. Everybody should be treated equally. When I come down here, I'm not treated like other people. I am, when I spoke with Mr. Burgess, well, not, I was talking about when I went over to the prison review board and how I was saying the cooked mice, and Mr. Burgess took and, oh, and he actually said that I was a liar, that I was lying. But it was Beth, the councilperson that works over, that works, is in charge of the prison. Her, Brandy Fisher, they were, these are, these are someone that has been going to these meetings, and I didn't know. They have the meetings, and Fitzgerald don't even go. They said Fitzgerald is leaving. It's about time. You know, another thing I wanted to say, and I wanted to apologize to Liz Bennett. I see where Liz had run, was gonna run, and then she wasn't able to. But I had said, this is that man who's walking around talking about, I could go in there and I could run the place. I think that Liz Bennett could. She has been a councilperson over there. She's from the Hill District, I mean, poorer areas. You understand. She understands what we're going through, and she knows what we should have because she's experienced it. I'm saying to you, each one of you, you run different districts, but you're supposed to be for the whole city. That means for every citizen, even me, even if I'm not in your neighborhood. But when I heard Mrs. Gross say how they made the decision that when they're going, pick the police, that they would put us, the Hill District, with Shady, with her area. What I'm saying is that we to get over there with two buses, but you could have had it here. But that shows you the favoritism that you would put it in your white neighborhood, we're mostly white, and the black ones, we have to get over there the best way we can. Come on, do us better than that.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers in chambers wishing to speak? If not, I have seen that Poma Chakman-Yaheli has joined us.
Greetings, everyone, and I do appreciate allowing me to speak at this time. I was unavailable at the moment. I am, my title is East Poma Chakman-Yaheli, and I am the Grand Council Chief Member of the Air Force Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. I'm also the Grand Inca Chief of my own nation-state, Ongway Ongway Aborigines, nations of the Americas. And I want to remind city council of the efforts that many people around the city are doing to stop the violence. There are organizations that are coming together and joining and aligning themselves with the Aborigines here in this particular territory. We call it the Delaware Territory. You call it Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. And I will say that city council can do a service to all people as they are described to be responsible for all of the people of the city of Pittsburgh. And although we are not under the jurisdiction of your government, this is our lands. And when we align ourselves with the people on our lands, we align for the right reasons. And so we align to stop the violence. Please continue to support grassroots efforts that are doing this work. I've been doing this work in the community for upwards of 20 years, and my ancestors did the same work before I arrived on this plane. So I will say, there'll be things coming across your desk of groups that are working so much with our people, the indigenous people here in Pittsburgh to alleviate these things through programming. So when it comes across your desk, do give it careful consideration that you're not only helping yourselves and you're not only helping the residents, you're also giving back to the true indigenous people, helping to restore and repair our lands. It's an effort that everyone is responsible to take a part in and also to see our cosmic vision and how we see seven span generations for our children. Food forest is one way, and I will say this will help the city in five, 10, 15 years to come and will be sustainable for hundreds of years. Don't just look at short-term solutions for agriculture. Look at long-term solutions. And food forestry is one that sustains the land, helps with the environment, decreases stress in people and communities, but also provides food for hundreds of years at no cost to the city. So truly consider food forestry. It is the wave of the future across the country and across the globe. I yield.
Thank you. That, having exhausted all our speakers, takes us to our standing committee agenda. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. We have one deferred paper, Bill 1108.
Bill 1108, ordinance amending Title II, Article V, Chapter 237, Stop the Violence Fund, Section 23703, uses and restrictions of the Stop the Violence Fund, directing the mayor's designee thereunder the Office of Management and Budget and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to utilize a reporting form approved by city council to ensure proper and legal use of said funds by grantees thereunder in accordance with ordinance 237 Stop the Violence Fund of the City of Pittsburgh Code.
Motion to approve.
Second.
With discussion, please.
Oh, discussion, Madam President. I didn't see you go online. Madam President?
Thank you. I'm on my way in. Can we hold this bill to the end of the meeting because we're getting an amendment ready and bringing it in?
Okay. So we'll leave.
Okay, thank you.
We will leave the bill open on the table. That will take us to our new papers, Bill 1334.
Bill 1334, resolution authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement or agreements with Riser Consulting LLC in an amount not to exceed $20,000 for professional services related to litigation in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania case.
Reproach.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1335.
Bill 1335, resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of $37,027.50 to reimburse the city for the installation of 10 dual-holed electric charging stations.
Motion to approve.
Second, discussion.
Strasburger?
Thank you. Is there anyone who can speak to this who's here today? Oh, great. Hello. Sorry. Did not look around, actually. Welcome. Good morning. Please introduce yourself and.
Jennifer Olzinger, Chief Procurement Officer for the city.
Good morning. Brandon Walton, Senior Manager of Fleet Services.
Great, thank you. I would love to mostly know where these will be placed and also to say it sounds like this is a receiving and spending, so this is completely covered by, not by the city of Pittsburgh, but by other sources of funding.
Correct. So this, this one is 20 plugs for the Department of Public Works warehouse, where their facilities maintenance team will be moving eventually. We're replacing about 15 of their vehicles, or 19 of their vehicles, sorry.
Okay. And I take it that this is tied to, although we haven't reached them yet, the next couple of bills up on the agenda today?
Yes. They're all somewhat connected, but not quite.
Different sources of funding, but yeah. I realize that we're not discussing it yet, but it sounds, just to sort for the purposes of consolidation a little bit, we have, is the recycling packer, the fully electric recycling packer going to utilize these plugs?
No.
Oh, okay.
If we want to discuss now or wait until the next bill is introduced, it does directly relate to the next bill.
The vehicles. Got it. Okay. I was just curious where they were going and, you know, we're replacing them and how we're utilizing these funds. I think it's really positive and fully in support, so just wanted to learn a little bit more. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1336.
Bill 1336, resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Department of Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of $253,125 to reimburse the city for the purchase of 45 all-electric vehicles.
Reproach.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1337.
Bill 1337, resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of $1,345,000 to purchase three electric recycling packers and five compressed natural gas garbage trucks.
Reproach.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. So I just have to say, to be consistent with our previous discussions, Brandon, are you still at the table? I can't really see the table.
He is.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Chair. So this bill, 1337, has three electric recycling packers combined with five CNG garbage trucks. So, Brandon, can you just kind of recap for us why, we've had this discussion before, but just to recap for anyone that's listening, why we're doing electric recycling packers but not, and not electric garbage trucks? And then I'll follow up probably with another question.
No problem. The reason for the not going electric with the refuse packers is the size of the routes in addition to the distance between the city and the landfills that they have to travel to and from. So we're not quite sure that the electricity will be enough to make the full route.
Our garbage travels from like your house when it's full, 15 miles outside of the city, either one direction or another, but our recycling trucks don't.
Correct. The recycling trucks travel to, I believe it's in Hazelwood, the recycling center.
So you know, I don't like the CNG garbage trucks, so I'm kind of like damned if I do and damned if I don't on this because I like the electric recycling packers. Again, we've had this discussion recently, but can you tell me about the length? So not only do I not like supporting the compressed natural gas and think that we should have kind of bridged the gap while the technology isn't ready for us, we've sort of not chosen CNG, that's well-established, but we also know that the trucks that we added to our fleet are too long and are adding, are damaging property because they cannot make the turns. Their turning radius is tight enough. Can you talk about these five trucks?
So these five trucks do fall under that category. They are a little longer than the diesel trucks. Somewhere, we haven't gotten an exact measurement yet, but it looks to be somewhere around two to three foot longer.
Then why are you buying them?
So we have worked with another vendor, both chassis and body company. We've been able to shrink those trucks by about two feet, so they're a lot closer to the same length as the diesel trucks.
Okay. I think I misunderstood what you said. I thought you said that these five were longer than the diesel trucks.
These five were. We ordered these through the previous vendor, and then we worked with another vendor to shorten the trucks. It's a different, different style body with the same capacity.
So why are we purchasing these ones? I just have to go back to that. Why, I mean, this resolution authorizes you to purchase them.
So these.
No, to receive a grant to purchase them.
Correct. So these were.
So we're searching funding source, but they were already purchased?
These were already purchased on the 2021 vehicle plan. So this is a reimbursement. It's about $168,000 per truck that they're giving us back for going with the CNG and electric over the diesel.
So that kind of helps me, actually. So I already voted no on the purchase of these trucks, but today I can vote yes on receiving a grant to cover the costs on the trucks I voted no on. Did I say that accurately?
Yes.
Correct.
Correct.
You're off screen, and so I can't tell if you've responded or anything.
No problem.
So that was, can someone actually say yes out loud?
Yes, you are correct.
Thank you, Brandon. There you go. I'm saying, there you pop back up on the screen, and then we can see you and hear you when you speak, so I appreciate that. If you're nodding your head, you're like, you're gone and I can't see you. So I will vote yes on this today, but I also am expecting to hear that you're rerouting those longer trucks so that they're not trying to make tight turns in small, narrow alleys that have 90-degree turns in Lawrenceville or elsewhere in districts that they cannot make the turn. Again, I have video on my own phone of one struggling to make the turn off of Craig onto Baum, which is a four-lane road. So they're really struggling with tight alleys. So I would love to see that communication. Have you rerouted these trucks that I don't know about?
So we met with a vendor yesterday onsite, the fleet team as well as environmental services. We actually measured the trucks that have came in that are longer versus the drawings that we have of the new expected trucks that'll be arriving sometime in late summer, and it was confirmed that they're about two foot shorter.
So the trucks that we have that are two feet longer, including these ones, have you routed them differently so that they're not on the routes that they can't make the turns?
That would be a question for Sean Weigl, the Environmental Services Supervisor. He's in charge of the routes.
Could you all pass that along for Madam Clerk? Do you want to contact the routing team? Or do we want to bring him to the table?
He's not here, but I don't know if we could try and get him on teams or.
Because we asked about this several weeks ago, and I haven't heard back from anyone at TPW.
Certainly follow up with him and get you an answer on that.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you for your help. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Coghill?
Mr. Chair.
Okay, Councilman Kraus?
Good morning. Could I ask you to pull your microphone just a little bit closer?
Sorry.
It is difficult here, people. Thanks. Appreciate your help.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Coghill?
Morning, Brandon, Jennifer. You know, and I had been given this information by our budget director, Peter, and Ria. The compressed natural gas facility where we fill them up, that is not included in the grant money, correct? We are paying for that out of pocket, and that's, I want to say, quarter million? Is that right it was? Three hundred thousand, maybe?
Yeah, $120,000 a year for the lease.
Okay. And my question is this, those filling stations, what's the life expectancy of these CNG trucks? How far do we expect them to go?
It's hard to say because we keep vehicles longer than we should already as a city, but we have some CNG trucks that are still in service after 12 years.
Oh, okay. So the fueling stations should last the life of the truck. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we're getting two, three?
So we are leasing the fueling station?
We are leasing.
So because we're leasing the fueling station, it's on the lease company to maintain. So if there's any problems with it, all the repairs are covered under the lease.
Gotcha. No danger of the lease of the company saying they no longer need it and not having the fueling stations then? Because if we don't own and operate them, they're, it's going to be around, I guess, is what I'm asking.
We believe so. There's nothing that we expect. They're a pretty big company.
Okay. Okay, that's good. That's all. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Bill, thank you for being here. That takes us to Bill 1341.
1341, resolution further amending Resolution Number 647 of 2020, effective December 23, 2020, as amended entitled. Resolution adopting and approving the 2021 capital budget and the 2021 community development block grant program and the 2021 through 2026 capital improvement program by reducing trail development by $500,000 and increasing facility improvements, sports facilities by $200,000, and complete streets by $300,000.
Motion to approve.
Second, with discussion, please.
Discussion.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I would hope you permit interrogatory.
Yes.
And perhaps give Councilman Wilson an opportunity to let members know a little more about the bill.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes. I have projects in the district that are ready for shovel-ready projects, basically. And so reviewing what's available, this project doesn't seem to be moving anytime soon, so happy to fill this in the future, but wanted to get this moving, these other projects moving.
I'm sorry, Councilman. Which project is in moving?
They have to negotiate with the railroad, and the railroad wants more money than we have to give them.
Or trail development, Councilman?
Yes.
And can you elaborate just a little bit more about what trails might be affected by this?
There aren't, the one in the Strip District, so there's not currently a trail there.
I'm sorry, Councilman. So you're saying that the money that you'd like to move has previously been allocated for possible trail development in the Strip District?
Yeah. Yeah, sorry, I'm a little distracted because seeing the disturbing news that's happening in Oakland right now. So, yeah, so there is a, there are, there was a plan, there is a plan. So, yeah, so there is a, there are, there was a plan, there is a plan to connect the trail completely, and there is a piece of rail that still exists that is, that has been negotiated in the past administration. The current administration is still looking to negotiate with the rail, and initial negotiations were, you know, I mean, basically, we don't have as much money as the railroad wants from us.
Mr. Chair and Councilman, that's all the questions that I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to invoices. We need a motion to approve the invoices.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, Mr. Chair.
You're voting no on the invoices?
I am, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. One in opposition, invoices are approved. Need a motion to approve the P-cards.
So moved.
So, yeah. Very brief discussion, please.
Certainly. Discussion?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'm trying to find the cards here. There's a number of, I hear, from Domi to pay PayPal for a number of different registrations. Mr. Chair, do you know off the top of your head if this is sort of common practice for us to have individual PayPal accounts for different departments?
Those were for trainings that I believe, I think it was 10 employees from Domi. Those were for registrations for trainings that were occurring for Domi employees.
So as a way to pay for those trainings, you're saying?
Yes.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Madam President?
I just wanted so for the public to know that before we put the invoices even on the table, they not only are shared with members, but we also get the approval of our budget office, our chair, and our city council solicitor to make sure that we're trying to put checks and balances in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? P-cards are approved. That takes us to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Kraus. Our first new paper is Bill 1330.
Bill 1330, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or agreements with the state office of the fire commissioner for the purpose of receiving and sending grant funds in the amount of $10,000 to support repairs to Medic 10.
Question, approve, please?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1331.
Bill 1331, resolution providing for reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the final design and construction phases of the Frankstown Ave Signal Improvement Project and providing for the payment of costs thereof not to exceed $4,153,400, or $349 reimbursable at 80% and the municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed $13,000.
Question, approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, maybe. Very brief. Just would like to give the council member whose district this is in an opportunity to speak to if they wish. Frankstown Avenue, forgive me, is that Councilman Burgess, Mr. Chair?
I believe it is, but he is not with us this morning.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1333.
Bill 1333, resolution providing for reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission to recoup yearly costs associated with the city's participation and attendance in the Member Planning Agency Participation Services.
I apologize. Question, approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none?
Question, Mr. Chair?
Councilwoman Gross?
Just curious that this isn't an intergovernmental affairs. Not that it really matters, but it is membership with a kind of intergovernmental agency.
It certainly could have been.
All right, I would support it.
Second, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman Kraus?
Yeah, thank you. Councilwoman Gross brings up an interesting point. What is your understanding? How have we handled this in the past? And maybe Madam Clerk needs to brief us, but how have we done this in the past? Is it, have we moved bills from one committee to the other committee if we find them to be perhaps misassigned for final vote?
We, I believe we've done so for final vote. I don't believe we've ever done so at the table.
Yeah. I mean, I am open to Councilwoman Gross's interpretation, so perhaps maybe, I'll take on the responsibility to meet with the clerk before final vote to see if the bill actually does need to be reassigned. How's that?
I think that's fair.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Wilson. Our first new paper is Bill 1338.
Bill 1338, an ordinance clarifying a street name discrepancy of Alakwippa Street between Sutherland Drive and Utterback Drive as located the fourth, fifth wards of the city of Pittsburgh as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The following street name was clarified by CPAC in January 2023. The name listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title 4, Public Places and Property, Chapter 420, Uniformed Street Naming and Addressing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
May I?
Yes, Councilwoman Gross?
Just being a little persnickety about the syntax in this sentence. I think there's just a few missing words, and so, for example, as located, it says as located the fourth as instead of as located in, and I assume that fourth slash fifth means and? It crosses over from the fourth ward to the fifth ward?
That is.
Can anyone?
That is correct.
Okay. Would you mind just a little verbal amendment, just so we have some clear grammar in the title of the bill?
Yes.
Thank you. So, Madam Clerk, may I just motion to amend the title of the bill so that we add the word in after located? And then amend fourth slash fifth to read fourth and fifth?
Okay.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The bill has been amended. Any further discussion on the bill as amended? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Bill 1339.
Bill 1339, resolution authorizing the mayor and the directors of the Department of City Planning and the Department of Finance on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a license agreement or agreements with Duquesne Light Company, Inc. and Pittsburgh Parking Authority for the installation and maintenance of electric vehicle charging stations at 6117 Kirkwood Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1340.
Bill 1340, resolution authorizing the mayor and the directors of the Department of City Planning and the Department of Finance on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a license agreement or agreements with Duquesne Light Company, Inc. and Phipps Conservatory and Botanical Gardens for the installation and maintenance of electric vehicle charging stations at 1 Shindley Drive.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to, excuse me, that takes us to our Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee, which is chaired by Councilwoman Gross. Our first bill is Bill 1327.
Bill 1327, resolution adopting the plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for the arena and sports performance complex project, which will involve the development of a new six-story arena and associated three-story sports performance complex. The site address is 3719 Terrace Street, Pittsburgh, PA 15261, in the fourth ward.
Question, approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Bill 1328.
Bill 1328, resolution amending resolution number 806 of 2018 entitled, resolution authorizing a cooperation agreement or agreements with the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh in connection with the URA's application for redevelopment assistance capital program grant of up to $1 million for the Stevens Elementary School redevelopment project to increase the grant amount to up to $1,500,000 in authorized spending.
Question, approve?
Second with discussion.
Second.
Discussion, Madam President?
Yeah, I just want to thank the administration for moving the money forward. We had made some changes before, and my microphone's off. I just want to thank the administration because we had moved some funding before so that they could do a different project, and they promised that they would put this money forward, and they did, so I just want to thank them for that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to our final bill, Bill 1329.
Bill 1329, resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant in favor of PA Municipal League in the amount of $52,962.24 for 2023 Pennsylvania Municipal League dues.
Question, approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That exhausts our agenda for today. No, I apologize. We still have the one bill that is open on the table, which is Bill 1108, our first bill of the day. The bill is still open, Madam President?
Yeah, I was, so I was going to make a motion to amend, but the amendment still does not include the one, some of the language we need, so I want to amend, I want to vote it today, and we'll amend it on Tuesday to include the additional language. And I want to thank Ricky Moody and Assistant Director David Jones and Jay Gilmore for working on this so much. It's been taking such a long time since we did it, but trying to come to a consensus where everyone's in agreement of what needs to be done. So with that said, I just want to pass it today, and then we'll make the amendment on Tuesday.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Now we have exhausted our agenda. Thank you. Meeting announcements. On Thursday, March 30, with sessions at 1:30 and 2:00 p.m., council will hold a briefing on the recent decision on the rental registry. Also, Thursday, March 30, at 3:00 p.m., council will reconvene the executive session on bills 1313 and 1314 related to the collective bargaining agreement with the FOP. And next week, council will hold our regular and standing committee meetings on Tuesday, April 4, and Wednesday, April 5, at 10:00 a.m., respectively. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 a.m. the day of the meeting. To register to speak at these meetings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. We also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Anything from members, Madam President?
I just want to say that today at 1 o'clock, they're celebrating the anniversary, the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War at the Veterans Memorial on the north side, and so we'll be presenting proclamation there. And then this evening, they have an event, too, at Heinz History Center, so I want to acknowledge that. But I also want to thank you. We've been working through this budget and through the contract for the FOP, and you and the clerk's office and the budget office and our solicitor have been doing such a great job, but your leadership has been really amazing, and I just want to thank you for that and your partnership. I appreciate that, no matter what time I call or text you, you give me some answer and some insights. I want to thank you for that, and I want to acknowledge, I think the public needs to know, you're very quiet here at the table. They don't realize the force you are to reckon with behind the scenes and the things you do.
Makes a lot of noise behind the scenes.
And the things you do, so I just want to thank you for that, because your leadership has really showed a lot over the past few months, so thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from members? If not, we need a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
All, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.